Michelle Smarian.
Lyndon Novak.
Mark Zeso.
Randy Brinkman.
Jan Zaiman.
Brian Rockoff.
Seeing as we're called at the quorum, we're calling them in order, adopting the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Agenda's adopted. New business. Bill, would you introduce the first case to us?
Yeah. Did you want to do your prep speech, Randy?
Yeah, I can. This is a quasi judicial body. The intent is to look at the applicant and look at, not at the applicant, but look at the question before us. And we'll make decisions based upon finding the facts that are relevant to the case. This is, we have several steps to it. First is the introduction of the case by the building official as to why, what's, what he objected to their request and why it's in violation of our ordinances. Now, the second point will be for the applicant to state his case and why he wants or she wants what is requested. And then after that, we'll have open discussion with the public where they can make their comments. We will, we will submit written comments that we've already received prior to this meeting from anyone in the village. And then after that, we'll have a discussion among the board in which we can have discussion. We will ask questions of the applicant and the building official. And we'll work at obtaining a listing of findings and facts on which we'll base our decision. Once we agree on those finding of facts, we'll have a vote and make a decision. That decision is binding with one exception. If the applicant does not agree with our decision, they have thirty days to appeal to the circuit court. If they do not appeal to the circuit court or they do not find in their favor, our ruling stands. I think that explains.
That's it. Very good. Thank you. So, moving on to new business, only four of appeals case two-five-dash-zero-three-zero-five. Property is located at three-zero-one-five-eight Rosemont Court. The zoning is RL. On the letter around the agenda, as you have in front of you, I had listed the ordinance prior to listing the actual ordinances that the applicant is requesting a variance for. But he's asking for one variance first and then the second one second. I think, Randy, I think it would be who of us to, for you to handle them separately.
Okay.
Because if the first violation is not granted, then it makes the second one moot.
Yes, I agree.
So, the first would be under section twelve-sixty-eight-point-one-three pairing B. An accessory building shall be in the rear yard except when structurally attached to the main building. The above shed is in the side yard, therefore in violation of the above ordinance, the applicant is requesting a variance to locate the shed in the north side yard. So, to start with, the shed is not allowed to be in that side yard to start with. So, no matter where it's at within the property line, if you don't grant him the variance for that, the distance to the property line is irrelevant. The second part of that would be is if in fact you do approve having or allowing the shed to be in the side yard. It would be section twelve-sixty-eight-point-one-three. In no way shall a detached accessory building be near than ten feet, excuse me, to any adjoining lot or nearer than ten feet to the principal building. The issue is not the principal building, but the issue is the shed is located six feet from the north side lot line. Therefore, in violation of the ordinance by four feet, the applicant would then be requesting a variance of four feet to allow the shed to be within six feet of that side yard. So, that would be item number two if in fact one does get approved.
Thank you.
Okay. You have this. I think Bashir submitted some, may have submitted some stuff here. I don't know if you've been to the site. I presume that you have. The shed is existing. This is Rosemont Court. The driveway comes up to the top of the hill where the house is located. And the shed is over here in the side yard. So, that's what I'm referring to. Definition of the ordinance is a rear yard is from the back of the house to the rear property line. So, I take a line similar to that across the back. That's the rear yard. That's where it's allowed to be. This is a side yard. This is a side yard. And then this is a front. It's helpful to understand how it's like that way or how the ordinance defines it.
Anything else, Bill?
Nope, that's all I have. Thank you.
Is the applicant here? Could you say your name and address for the record, please?
Bashir Shama, three-zero-one-five-eight Rosemont Court. So, the only location that would place the shed was in that location without having to resort to grading or to tree removals. So, this is the only area in, in my lot that I can put it without having to remove trees or regrade. It's a hilly area. If you've been to the site or if you look at the site plan, you can see it's the elevations in, on the lot. So, if I were to put the shed anywhere but where it is today, I'm gonna have to regrade. And then I'm going to have to cut some trees as well in the area where it has the minimum optional regrading. In that area, it's flat. I do not need to regrade. I did not need to cut any trees. And that's why we put it over there. So, relocating it anywhere else is just, it's gonna require changing wireways, it's gonna require regrading, and it's gonna require as well removing trees. So, this is for the first point. For, for the second point about the distance from the lot line, if I'm allowed to speak to that, we're only violating in one corner. The six feet is only one corner. The other four corners are within the limits. And according to Southfield Township ordinance for distances for shed, ordinance twelve-sixty-eight dot one-three, section D, the minimum point is five feet.
This is, this is Southfield Township, Franklin Village.
Correct, correct. And, and this is why, one of the reasons why, why was the distance? When we looked at it, the other reason as well, when we placed the shed, there was no boundary survey yet. We used the site plan as a reference. And it is, it is twelve feet from where the lines were on the, on the site plan. So, later on, there was a boundary survey that was established after the shed was placed. And then the measurement happened. So, prior to that, we did not. So, the reason I referenced the, the Southfield Township because we are in Township. I know we're in Franklin. We have different ordinances. But, you know, this is just point of reference. Other point as well is when we put the shed there, there was no boundary survey. We used the site plan. And we're actually surprised to see the difference between the boundary survey and the site plan, you know, when it comes to lot lines. We thought it would be like within six inches and it was not. So, this is the other reason.
When did you apply for the permit on the building?
For, for the shed?
Yes.
It's my understanding that sheds under a hundred square feet do not need a permit.
Sheds under two hundred square feet do not require a building permit to be issued. However, they do have to meet the zoning requirements.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Is there any code for like rat walls or anything supposed to be done under this building?
Frost-protected footings are only required on accessory buildings that are in excess of four hundred square feet.
And it's on a cement pad, right?
I don't know what it's on.
Yeah, it's on cement.
From my perspective, it didn't require a building permit. I don't, I don't have any.
Just going and looking at the site.
Correction as to what it should be set on.
Also, there is a lot of sheds in, in the neighborhood. Also, if you look at them and if I refer to ordinances, they're not necessarily compliant with, with the ordinances just because the nature of, of the hilly nature of our neighborhood, which, you know, I, I understand. Now I understand why these sheds were placed the way it is now that I think about it. When I walk around, I'm like, well, there's a lot of sheds don't meet the requirements. But then I look at it, I'm like, yes, I understand this because people probably avoid regrading or cut trees as well. So, this is another point. Of course. Thank you.
Your, your application references many times a corner lot.
Yes, yes. So, it's, it's a cul-de-sac. But if you, if you zoom out, you're actually backing up to Northwestern Highway. And then you have Inkster. So, the corner, the lot backs up to Northwestern and to Inkster.
Where's Inkster on the map?
On, would that be the north side? Right here.
It'd be west. North is that way.
Yeah.
Can we, I'm just, I'm confounded a little bit because I was looking to try and figure out exactly where this, how, where the corners are. Because the corners have different regulations, different ways.
That particular property referencing the denial that was submitted in the request for the variance has really no relevancy to where the back of that property backs up to. The issue is, can it be in a side yard? And can it be less than ten feet from the property line is the two issues we're here for. The back, the back of the property may back up to Inkster and then the other part of the property may back up to Northwestern, which I first I don't believe it does.
I don't believe that's here.
There's two properties, correct? You own two properties.
Correct, correct.
That are adjacent to each other and one of them backs to Inkster.
So, whatever other piece of property he owns is a separate piece of property and has nothing to do with this piece until they're combined as a one.
I was trying to figure out those.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's why I referred to it just because it's, I was trying to give an, and try as much as accurate explanation of where the lot is.
I understand that, but the, the code has a very specific definition of corner.
Okay.
And it gives you some, some latitude in things, but I don't think this qualifies as a corner.
It's not a corner lot.
No. It's a high-shaped lot. There's a home on both sides.
Right.
But here's my bigger question, which is, one of your reasons for hardship is that it would, because of trees and grading. And we have an aerial photo in front of us that shows a flat mode area.
Okay, so.
That's what I observed when I went to see the site, so I'm not sure where the grading would come at.
So, you're, you're more than welcome to come to the property, but if you look at it, it's actually sloped. The whole property is sloped, so it will require regrading, especially in the backyard. The area with the most minimal requirement for regrading, that's where I have my well. And this is where the power lines go, if I may approach.
There's hills over here. And, and you can see it's all, it's all the way down, right? From here to here, all over here, there's a hill, hill, hill. From here, it's all on, I wanna say, I don't know, twelve to twenty degrees depending on what you're looking. You have a well in this area, the power lines coming through. This is, the shed is in this area right here, you know, under a pine tree where there is nothing because none goes under a pine tree.
So, we don't have a grading map in our package, do we?
The great, there.
Is it in our package?
This diagram shows grade lines.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for.
Can we go back to this picture?
Yeah.
I'm just looking to see what the amount of, oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, can't read it.
All these lines, these lines here are the proposed change of grade lines from the original plan that was brought in. But see these dotted lines? The dotted lines are the original grade of the site. Now, when this property was developed, the only grade line that was changed was along this area. At this area, these grade lines stayed, but was there all along. Now, everywhere you get a line is a change in the grade of a certain amount. I don't know that I can read these numbers right offhand. My eyesight is not very good. That's why I wear glasses. But typically, they're either two-foot, one-foot or two-foot intervals. So, from here to here would be a two-foot rise in elevation. And from here to here would be two-foot. Just like, see these gray lines here? When you get near the edge of the property out to the neighborhood, it drops off fast.
What's the grade lines now where the structure is existing currently?
This is right here.
Okay.
And it's pretty flat around this area.
Okay. So, is that area considered the back even though it's along the side if it's?
This would be the line that way is back.
Okay, so, but that would be considered a side yard or a backyard? If you were to move your hand six inches to the left.
This area?
To the left, towards me. Come towards me.
Okay.
And backyard.
That's backyard. So, right there where it also is flat.
And that's flat there?
That's flat?
No, it is sloping, but it's a very minimal slope.
You're saying it's two feet from one dotted line to the next?
It only raises two feet unless it's eighty feet.
That, that particular area would be considered backyard is what I'm getting at?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
If this shed moved back that distance, it would be in the rear yard. We wouldn't be here.
Okay.
Is there enough flat land right at the break where he could put it there without much?
That's not my decision to make, but I truly believe that's possible.
And so, I will still have to regrade there. The regrade will be minimal.
And then here's your trees that are in the area. Trees are all these markings here.
Yeah, but there would be no.
So, those are the trees. If this shed was moved from here to here or here, it would probably be done and be in the backyard.
Other than grading it, isn't it possible, I mean, I've got one of those big sheds like yours in my backyard, but rather than having it right on the ground, it's on a platform that's built, you know, into the hillside kind of. So, it's flat and on a small grade. So, I, you know, it's, I'm just, other than grade.
It tells you what it's setting on, but because of its size, it's not required to have a prospertive footing.
Understood.
It's not required to have a post. It's not required to have concrete piers. It can be some, or my horse.
Sure.
So, that's what the code says it can be.
And, and to put it in this area, I will have to move trees in there and I will still have to do.
Yeah.
That's not what Bill said.
It says the tree ordinance. I mean, those are the, those dots are trees.
How old was this survey? Like, does the, do these pictures match what we see on the survey in terms of where the trees are?
Well, yes, they, they will, it matches. The trees are accurate on the site plan, to answer your question. It's about, everything on there is matching the site plan. That's where the trees are.
If you look at this picture of the house.
Oh.
And right in here, there's no trees.
Sorry.
Here's the house. No trees in behind it.
And that, and that grade is?
So, this is all backyard here.
Yeah.
That shed is over here. And you can see this area here.
And no trees.
I don't see a lot of trees there by itself.
Yeah, but, but this area is, there is a slope there. You'll have to regrade in this area. So, I have, I have my well over here.
How big is the shed?
Eighty square feet.
By ten?
Correct, right? But, but the problem is I will still have to regrade in Syria.
There is no flat land in Franklin to speak of. That's a fact of life.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why people like it here.
Yeah.
Not true.
Right, right. You know, if it was flat, you know, we would have put it in, in the backyard, obviously.
I'm looking in one of the letters from, that was emitted. I have a photograph. Let's see if anyone knows which one I'm looking at.
Yes.
That of a patio with a table in it. I don't know if you, this picture. Is that an accurate, that one there, it's there for you.
Yeah.
Is that accurate representation of your yard today? I mean, the table, yeah.
Right, the table, yes, the, the way it is. But like, what's the point of the question?
I see lots of flat area.
Yeah, I know.
I, I understand.
I, I would invite you to come out to the property, take a look. You will see it. It, it requires regrading. It's not flat. These hills look a lot high, like, and when you're there, because this is taken from the steps up. But if you're standing there, you will actually see the elevation.
But for eighty square feet, there's not, there's. That looks pretty, if you go straight back between the double tree and the right.
All these, all these here are berms, are hills up.
Up there, but closer in.
Right? And then they start sloping down, right? You get to here, still, everything is still on a slope all the way through here, through here. All of it, it slopes down, the entire property slopes down all the way through the street.
But to carve out an eight-by-ten space that you're grading for doesn't, I mean, even if you were to tuck it along the tree line there, maybe in an area that was not as steep of a slope, doesn't seem like that big of a deal.
So, again, it were, I'm not saying it would, it cannot be done without regrading. You'll have to regrade. And this is what we're trying to avoid, regrading or cutting any trees. That was a flat piece of land, you know? Because, because my question is always going to be, all right, we have the ordinance. What's the intent of the ordinance, right? What's the intent behind the shed ordinance? That's, like, this is one of the questions, right? Because if, if the, because this doesn't impact the environment. It was put in there with the least, minimal impact to anything around. We did not want to cut any trees. We did not want to even move anything, any greenery of some sort. We did not want to grade. So, we kept the, anything that's regarding to the environment, we kept it to minimal impact. So. And like, for example, you, sometimes you have ordinances that protects the environment, protects the trees, protects, right? So, you know, our variance is focused also on that it, you know, if we look at the intention behind the shed ordinance, you know, there is no impact on the environment at all. Right? Okay.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the board at this time? Then I'd like to open this for public discussion. Does anyone would like to come up? Please state your name and address for the record and state your comments. Before you speak, I'd like to state something very clear that, you know, regardless of how this board decides and what goes on, this meeting is over. We go back to our homes. We're still neighbors. So, I encourage everyone to be on a friendly, polite basis, whether you're for it or against it. I just like to be on a proper etiquette, polite basis. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We make the presentation.
Mark Schaller. I live in the house next door, three-zero-one-seven-five Rosemont. I'm here in opposition of the ordinance. The shed placement, in my opinion, yes.
You said you're here in opposition to the ordinance.
Opposition to the deviation of the ordinance. My mistake.
The variance.
Yes, variance. Yes.
Thank you.
So, a couple of just basic things. I believe the ordinance is there to protect the village as well as all of the residents in the village. And in this particular case, placing the shed on the side yard, I feel has a negative impact on our, our family's property based on its location. It's very visible from our front yard, our driveway, from the street. In addition, it is very close to the, the property line. And that property line was staked before the construction actually took place of the shed. I believe the pad may have been there, but there's a photo in the letter I submitted that clearly shows the stakes from the survey that was done with no shed in it. So, there was clear foresight as to where the property line was before the shed was actually put in place. So, it does encroach on the line. And then in regards to its placement, I do believe there's plenty of space in backyard. I think the ordinance was written very clearly and very simply where ten feet from the main structure and ten feet from the property lines are essentially the only regulations. And looking at the backyard, there's plenty of spaces, in my opinion, that you could place that. Immediately right off the patio could be a place. May not be the most ideal place, but I don't feel like placing the shed to negatively impact the neighbors is really the intent of the variance. It's really meant to protect everybody in the village. And so, I guess I would request that the board consider all the facts of the case and deny the request to grant a variance in this particular case.
Mr. Chair, Mark has submitted this.
Yes.
So.
Thank you.
Just so you understand who, which of us goes together. It used to have been like a written document.
Yep, and pictures.
Couple, couple of things. Can we go back to the previous picture? I'm so sorry.
I'm still in public discussion, so. Is there anyone else would like to speak in the public, please?
Hi, everyone. My name is Nasir Shama. I'm an architect. I have been in the architecture and construction industry for eighteen years. I have built so many houses. I just want to touch on a few additional points that haven't been discussed yet. So, we did talk about the, the different challenges of the site. Talked about the grading, the trees, the well, and the positioning of the shed. I would like to highlight what the purpose of the shed is. Like, where do, why people place sheds in certain locations, not other ones? So, accessibility is very important. You know, when we place a shed on a site, it needs to be accessible to certain points. So, sometimes having it in the side yard might, might make sense, like closer to the garage or where the concrete pads exist. For example, if you're using snow removal equipment and so on, and you want to store these in the shed or during winter times, you want to access these, you know, accessibility is important. So, just want to, you know, direct the discussion also on, towards another point, which is, what's the purpose of the shed, right? Is it just something we want to get out of sight or is it something functional that the residents will benefit from when storing stuff and using equipment, right? And the other point, we talked about the backyard. I have been there many times. I actually lived at this property for a cer, for a certain period of time. Now I live in Bloomfield Hills. Yes, the, the site might look flat, but it's actually sloped. And closer to the trees in the back, there are some hills. So, as was indicated, there's a change in elevation. But yeah, the, the set overall is, is sloped. Doesn't have a lot of flat areas. So, yeah, just want to highlight these two points is the, the, the purpose of the shed. And then the second thing for the backyard, imagine if you have an open field where your kids play, where you can play soccer or football and so on. You just place a shed right there, which you can see all the time, or it might impact the functionality of the backyard. I think most of us would probably elect a location that's slightly out of sight, right? Even though you have a flat area, you might not place the shed there. It would, it would impact the overall functionality of the backyard.
Thank you.
Yeah, no worries. Thanks.
Does the board have any questions at this point? Yes, Bill?
There is other.
Oh, there's one other one.
One other letter that was submitted.
Can the board take them in to read the Nicholas and Laura Pence letter also intentional? We're taking time now because these were. We're taking time now because these were not submitted in our packet, but were presented to us at the meeting.
The one we're referring to, at present moment, they're not in favor is the last sentence of the first page says, "For these reasons, we respectfully ask that the board uphold the ordinance and deny the request." You could read through the rest of it, is why they requested that, but the bottom line is that. This is from Nicholas and Laura Pence.
Okay, clerk, to make sure this is entered into the record that we have received this. So, we have two, uh, written letters from close by residents, uh, not in favor of granting the ordinance, of, of a variance rather. That being noted, open to discussion among the board.
I think we have another. Do you have another?
Yes, I have questions. My name's Ryan, I'm a neighbor. Address is three zero four zero five Roseman Drive. I just had a couple of questions. Um, when you installed the patio, did you have that piece of property graded for the patio?
The question should be addressed to the chairperson.
Oh, got it, okay, so I'll just-
Last name for the record?
Cite my assumptions then. I would assume, um, that when the patio was installed, there was also grading required. Would we also, would we assume that to possibly be accurate?
The patio or pad under the-
The patio in the backyard that was attached to the home. I would assume that when the patio was installed, there was grading work that was done to acquire that addition to the property, right? Uh, my next question was, how large is the property? What's the, we didn't have a packet when we walked in, we got here a little bit late. It's three acres, is that right?
It's two acres, correct?
Two acres.
With, with the adjacent, but we're saying that the adjacent acre is not part of it.
Got it.
So, it's two acres.
Okay, and the, the rest of the questions were directed towards the other hall, so, I'm okay. We'll leave it at that.
So, if I may answer this question, this was graded from the time of construction, that what I mentioned was already-
Is he a favor?
I don't know, we need to ask that question.
It's not relevant. The question's not relevant, from my standpoint.
He lives up the street, that's why I was wondering.
No, no, it's hard to grade it. It's hard as a patio grading, it's-
Okay.
Right.
Can I ask the appellate question again?
What?
Can I ask the appellate another question or not?
Sure, you may.
I have a question. If this was put in the backyard, is it also just because of the grading, or you just don't want to see the building, where you could plant something around it to hide?
Uh, grading, a grading, like, like my brother's mentioning. It, 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 it's all mainly grading, because we did not want to regrade anywhere, right? This was already graded from the time when we started the construction. If you see, the slab was already there even before the survey. The slab is right there, it's already there.
Is that, is that the property line survey, or was that the-
So, so, you know, there was a statement that, uh, you know, the, the shed wasn't there, uh, before the survey, but the slab was. Okay? So, the slab was there way before the survey. I, I, I almost, uh, days before the survey.
But did you then just assume that that was placed within the ordinance? Or did you further investigate before putting the shed up to make the difference?
No, we, we thought we were within the ordinance. So, what we did, uh, we're like, we're just looked at it and like, alright, we're ve- we're far, we're far from the property line. So, we didn't think this was going to be a problem.
So, the slab was already existing?
Yes.
Wow.
Was there an existing bu- building on that at one time?
No.
But, but if there was only a two-foot change in what you saw-
Mm-hmm.
Wouldn't it be, I mean, and that's a very small structure. It doesn't cover very many square feet.
Yeah, yeah.
Wouldn't it be very easy just to not ta- take twelve inches or whatever, remove twelve inches and have it be flat?
So, uh, here, here's my understanding and our thought process, that the county fronted upon regrading and, um, and cutting trees. Like, they're fronted upon, they're against it. It's my understanding that the county really, really against that. And because we're like, you know, we don't want to change the environment, we don't want to have any impact in any way, or sort of form. Uh, the, uh, the other thing as well, if, if visibility is a problem, because from the street, depending on where you look from it, you can't see it from the street. We're always happy to, to just like, cover it, you know, cover it completely, make it invisible. We can put arbovites, we can put trees. Uh, again, um, there is all these arbovites, uh, in the backyard of, of the neighborhood, there are trees over there, so they can't see it. Uh, the, the letter where the neighbors live, you cannot see it from there, you cannot see it from their property. But i- if, if visibility is an issue and the neighbors, uh, are not happy about it, because they see it from a certain angle, which I struggle to see from where, more than happy to add like, uh, arbovites all around, make it not visible at all. And we can do that very soon.
You're talking an eighty square foot cut into a hill, and you would not be removing any trees?
I will have to regrade, correct. Well, I'll have to regrade though.
Yeah, but you'd only be taking an eighty-foot cut, eighty square foot-
Yes.
Out of the side of a hill, which-
Mm-hmm.
In that area does not look like it would be more than maybe ten to twelve inches of soil, and you-
Yeah, you're not going very deep, right?
You, you, you actually are, you actually are, you, you have, if, you'll have to place a shed. To place the shed or to regrade in any area, you'll have to regrade the whole surrounding area, because you're going to impact the water flow, the waterway.
So, how wide of an area is that?
I don't think that'd be true.
Yeah, what, what-
And not in offense to what you're saying, but the information you submitted and what we have on record isn't justifying what you're saying, and, and if you give me a minute, I'll show you why.
Thank you.
Can you put that back up?
This is where the shed is. When it's done moving around, it's up there now. Okay. This is where the shed is. As I, as I had mentioned earlier, every one of these dash lines is a changing grade. And if you follow these lines around, this line comes to here, and this line comes around to here. And to move this in the backyard, it's only going to go from there to there within this same area. So, the maximum, the actual maximum, you would have to grade is two feet. But I doubt that even, because simply between these lines is a two-foot rise in elevation. So, half the distance here, it would be one foot to get it back to here, to move it from there to there. And that's the way the grade lines are shown from the original grading plan. So, we're talking, you would have to regrade this and maybe slope it away from the building a little bit.
Thank you, Bill.
I have a question. Just looking at the aerial images that we saw earlier, this, this area isn't clear, right? It's full of trees right now.
Yeah, you're above the area you're talking about. Because the trees are on the plan. Look at all those dots, those are all marked trees. You could move it over to that area and be away from the tree.
Yeah, I think this, this area here is pretty dense.
But it's got to be ten feet away to start with, but-
With vegetation, so you're, you're right, it can be placed here, it needs to be-
Ten feet away.
Probably somewhere-
From that dart line.
The, the dash line is the, the setback, right?
The hash line is a setback for a main structure, not a accessory. He could put it in that area, right in there. Be ten foot away, and I, my guess is, the most he would have to grade is a foot. And actually, he cut in the hill six inches and took that six and put it over here and add it to six. Now he's got a flat spot.
Basically a ten by ten?
Eight by ten.
Well, I'm just saying a little overhanded.
Well, okay, ten by ten, give it some grade slope, I guess.
Any other questions for the board? Any other questions among the board? Are you ready to move on to finding the facts?
Let's say something about that.
Briefly.
I'm going to show a brief on those pictures.
An example, right?
I spoke earlier, there are, in, in my neighborhood, many of the sheds are, for example here, if you look, this is the adjacent property, three zero one seven five, right?
We're looking, excuse me, we're looking at your shed and your property.
Correct, correct.
But, please let me finish.
Please.
Some sheds and some buildings in this village pre-exist the current ordinance. Therefore, they are grandfathered in. That's why I cannot look at other examples without knowing when they were done and if there was any variance granted to them. There are a lot of buildings and a lot of sheds in this village that are, that predate the ordinance.
I, I'm, I'm with you.
And they, they predate a lot of the time in some cases, but-
I'm, I'm not speaking against it, I'm actually using it as an example of, like, the, the reason that it's there. It's because if they were to try and move it elsewhere, they'll have to regrade or cut trees. So, it's a similar situation. So.
I got a question.
Yes.
Why do you think your neighbor is opposed to where it is if it's not unsightly?
Um, my neighbor and I, we did have some, uh, um, issues in regards to something else. Some property line dispute, which triggered my neighbor to place a complaint on this. Has nothing to do with, the slab was there for many years, my neighbor knew that there was a shed that was going to go there many times, right?
He says that he can, from his viewpoint, his property, that he can see the shed.
And more than happy to put a hedge of arbovites around, he will not be able to see it. I'll make sure that the whole thing is not visible from where he is. So, uh, that can be easily done. If, if visibility is an issue, I'm more than happy to address that situation right away.
But you're already beyond, you're already six inches closer to his property than you're supposed to be. If you were to put plantings that would take you, that would block the view from him, it would take you even closer to his-
It can be like, right within a foot, and I think, I believe you're allowed to, to plant up to three feet. Alright, Bill? So, like, if we were to, like, for example, uh, cover, uh, around the shed with hedges of arbovites, I think for the, the ordinance for planting things, you can plant things within three feet from the property line?
There is no ordinance relevant to residential properties and vegetation.
Alright, so, uh, that, that won't violate any ordinance, and I believe that will resolve the visibility issue. If they're, you know, happy.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you. Thank you for listening, thank you for giving me your time.
At this point, I'd like to ask for finding of facts, or any dis- first, any discussion among the board, what you'd like to talk about regarding this property and this request for variance. There being none, I'd like to, I'd like to follow Bill's suggestion of looking at the, taking the request in two parts. First being the side yard location, because if we grant a variance there, if we don't grant a variance there, there's no point in looking at the property line. Okay? So, I'd like to address the finding of facts, first of all, concerning the side yard. Some of the facts I've listed is that it's a two-point-seven acres parcel zoned in RL. The building is eighty square feet, eight by ten. It is currently in the side yard. Uh, there is over one-quarter of the property available in the backyard of the whole site. And I'm figuring out exactly, but I know it's at least one-quarter of the total parcel is in the backyard. And that, another finding of fact is there are areas in the backyard, uh, that would be available for this type of structure.
I think another finding of fact is that moving it would not necessarily involve grading if a platform was constructed instead to accommodate the variance in height.
Well, let me bring up this point. When we talk about variances and hardships, I don't see a hardship on this one whatsoever. Uh, and monetary things are not considered a hardship, uh, for purposes of granting or not granting a variance. It's a simple fact that we don't ha- not have a great deal of level of land in this village, and that's what a lot of people like. And we have ordinance to protect what we have, and not to have things in, the, the ordinance says, not in the side yard. And there is plenty of availability in the backyard to accommodate that. So, any other finding of facts we can come up with and help us make a decision?
We need a finding of fact that the, the building is in the side yard.
That's a finding of fact.
Here, do you state it?
I've already stated it.
How about the, do we have two letters of, uh, opposition?
Do you feel we have enough information from the finding of facts in which to make a decision? On the first, these finding of facts, say aye. Aye, opposed?